We have corrected our technical difficulties from earlier, so we're going to return now to Roman numeral one, which is "Presentation and Public Hearing on Proposed Amendments to Chapters 10, 33, 39, 40, and 42 of the Code of Ordinances." And you should have received, I think their package is here, but those were also sent out ahead of time to you. So at this time, I think we have a presentation by staff before we open the public hearing on that.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Despite the long delay, it's great to be back before you today. I will be talking about proposed ordinance amendment changes related to subdivision plat development, plat, and ultimately residential site plan. So they save the exciting part for later in the agenda today. I want to talk a little bit about the history of these proposed changes before I get into the actual details. As many of you will recall, we last amended Chapter 42 in 2013. At that time, the city, one of the major amendments was expanding the then-urban rules throughout the entire city, as well as modifications to the shared driveway requirements, and expansion of the special minimum lot size and special minimum building line program. At that time, we acknowledged that there were a few loose ends that we did not address at the time, including some of the items off of the Super Neighborhood Alliance's top 10. And I'm going to walk you through and highlight those points later on. So in 2013, the summer of 2013, the Planning Commission created a subcommittee that was chaired by Commissioner Jard, as well as Paul Nelson was on there, and Commissioner Brave. And we had neighborhood and developer representation. And as needed, we brought in subject matter experts, including our colleagues in Public Works and Engineering, as well as CenterPoint Energy. And we discussed the leftover items from the Chapter 42 changes of 2013. Now although these are considered Chapter 42 changes, the changes before you today touch a number of other ordinance chapters, including Chapters 10, Chapter 33, the landscape ordinance, Chapter 39, the solid waste ordinance, Chapter 42, the right-of-way ordinance. But predominantly, these are changes to Chapter 42, and are all related to subdivision, site plan, or residential site plan review. A little bit about the timeline going forward. Today, you're only being asked to listen to public comment and my presentation, and offer any comments you have to us. This is the commission hearing phase. On April 29th, the Planning Department will make a presentation to the City Council Quality of Life Committee, approximately the same presentation. We will have a public comment period, which is now currently open, and it will end on May 1st. After the close of the public hearing process, or public comment process, staff will compile all of the comments we've received, and create a matrix, and bring it back to the Planning Commission on May 14th. What we will do is we'll identify the comment, staff's recommendation, and any proposed action on the part of commission. After that time, when the commission considers the item, we anticipate being able to forward this on to the administration and council to consider in late May and/or early June. And since this is an amendment to Chapter 42, it will require a public hearing before all of City Council. So I'm going to be sticking pretty close to this paper document that should be in front of you when I'm walking through the highlights of the summary of changes. So if at any time you want to find out additional information, you can glance down. So let's start with residential group meters. I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to take the Super Neighborhood Alliance's Top 10 Walk related to Chapter 42, but this was one of the examples on that, that the committee walked on, or took the walk at the beginning of their process. And you'll notice that this utility group meter is prevalent across the city with respect to townhome-style development, dense single-family development, or multifamily residential development. Well, this is an aesthetics issue that the committee tackled out early on. The new requirement would be in Chapter 33, and would require these to be screened and not visible from the public street. And the screening can be through opaque structures or fences, as well as vegetation. And we did work with our counterparts in CenterPoint Energy to make sure that we have the adequate level of clearance from the meters, so that they can still access these. The next item, and feel free to stop me at any time if you have any specific questions related to the item that's up on the screen.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
How would you screen those in the front from public view, the way those clusters were?
The idea is to have them set back, or you could have vegetation planted within the public right-of-way, as long as it doesn't block sidewalks, of course.
Okay. Thanks.
The next item that we addressed was changes to the city's public recycling and collection requirements. The current requirements, as you know, they were based when there was one bin per each unit. Now we often see more than one bin, and in almost all cases, there's a bin as well as a recycling bin, so both solid waste and recycling. The current requirement is based on frontage that's excluding the driveway, and that's for every unit, you need to have five feet of frontage. Since we've doubled the number of bins, we've doubled the linear frontage requirement to one unit requires 10 feet of frontage. And again, we're talking about developments that are off of a Type 2 PAE or a shared driveway only, not the typical front-loading townhomes that you see with the 1017-style developments. We did work with the development community to create, and Solid Waste Department to create an option, so that if you don't have the ability or the space to meet the linear footage, you can stack them, as long as the surface behind the curb is reasonably flat, and you're not blocking access to fire hydrants, utility poles, or sidewalks. And this would be something that we would review at the subdivision plat stage, and it would just be a slight modification to our current process. A next easy fix is related with respect to group mailboxes that are built within the public right-of-way. We have clarified Chapter 40 to make sure that group mailboxes cannot be constructed in the middle of sidewalks, blocking access to utilities, or blocking access to the fire hydrants. Next, we did three main changes with our shared driveways. The first change is an aesthetics issue that came from the request out of the Super Neighborhood Alliance's Top 10. And this was if you are opting into the five-foot building line performance standard of a shared driveway-style development, you will be required to have underground utility connecting to the poles. And what this does is it removes the ugly, that's a technical term, utility connections that you see up on the screen, and instead you'll have underground utility connecting to those screened group meter boards. In addition, shared driveways are currently only allowed to take access from a public street. As you all know, a Type 1 permanent access easement is a private street essentially that is created to public street standards and has the additional right-of-way. We thought since there's nothing different, except for it could be gated, it made sense to allow these to take direct access from a Type 1 PAE. We will still prohibit direct access from a Type 2 permanent access easement, and that is because we worked with the Fire Department in the 2013 amendments, because that's a life safety issue. In addition, we revisited our 2013 amendment that limited the 200-foot depth of, length of a shared driveway from a public street, or in this particular case, a public street or a Type 1 permanent access easement. If you remember, before the amendments, you just had to be connected to a street, and it didn't necessarily need to have an improvement in that particular street. It could have just been a paper street. So in 2013, we said, you need to connect to a street that has an actual roadway, and it can be no more than 200 feet. In addition to that, we said that you could not connect more than one shared driveway. Well, what we found is that it makes sense for public safety, as well as vehicular circulation, to allow those connections and to remove that little, yet, green reserve from the screen to, so for instance, let's say I had a house on Lot 4, I would have the access to both Dynamo Street and Texans Street, depending on my particular needs for vehicular circulation. In addition to that, how it impacts public safety, if there's an emergency event near the intersection of Dynamo Street, I will still have access to Texans Street. I keep wanting to call it Texans Drive when I do this presentation. After shared driveways, we went back and we revisited our building line encroachment standards. If you recall, the Planning Department prior to 2013 had a longstanding policy that allowed a 30-inch encroachment to can a lever into the building setback line. We corrected that, but we only corrected it for building setbacks that were 10 feet or greater. We left those building setbacks less than 10 feet, so for instance, your shared driveway building setbacks of five feet, off the table at the time, and said we would revisit it with this 2013-2014 committee that was looking at additional changes. What you'll be able to do is for building setbacks less than 10 feet along a collector or a local street, so these are predominantly your shared driveway-style developments, you can have a maximum 30-inch encroachment overhanging, as long as you're above nine feet. So that's really the second floor or above. This is for balconies, architectural features, as well as fireplaces. There was an outstanding issue in the code that needed to be clarified, and not just for the under-10-foot building line, but also for the 10 feet and above. It was the definition of a bay window. What exactly is a bay window or habitable area? We would often see entire floors jetting out over into the encroachment, saying that they are a minor encroachment of a bay window. Well, what we did is we went back and we clarified. We defined that if you're doing habitable area, it could be no more than 50% of the facade area for each floor. And that gave us that definition of what we mean by minor. And again, this is for nine feet or above. At the request of the development community, we evaluated encroachments along a Type 2 permanent access easement. So if you are along a Type 2 permanent access easement, you can encroach up to 30 inches, as long as you're can a lever, above nine feet. And since this is an internal street, and it's not facing the public, we don't have that 50% coverage. It could be the entire second floor overhanging that right-of-way, or that building setback line. And we went back and clarified the bay window issue in the building lines of 10 feet or more, as well as the shared driveways, to make sure that we were clear on the language that we had identified causing some confusion with the applicants. In addition, we looked at a longstanding concern that we'd heard from the Planning Commission. Currently, if the historic old commission grants a certificate of approval, or sorry, a certificate of appropriateness for a historic structure that has, let's say, a five-foot building line, instead of the Chapter 42 10-foot building line, that property owner is required to go to the Planning Commission, put up those large signs, pay for the notification, pay for the variance process, and come before the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission has a shell-approved variance. Since we now have the building line encroachment section of Chapter 42, we created this as an automatic exception, so it often removes them from Planning Commission purview. And again, since you guys did not have any discretion, it was logical to put it directly into the code. Same thing with what is traditionally called the dual building line that you see for existing structures when a subdivision plat comes before you. So if a building was constructed and met all the rules, or in place at the time of construction, and you're just plating the property and want to clarify that the building is existing, to make sure that you don't have any issues with insurance or lending, and you're not expanding the building out or building up, you're maintaining the existing size, that would also be allowed under the building line encroachments and be no longer considered a variance for the Planning Commission. But again, that structure must be constructed in compliance with the rules in place at the time. This does not mean someone could come, build an error, and want to request a dual building line variance when they were in violation at the time. Did you have a question?
No, that answered that clarif-
Excellent. Next up, we reevaluated our special minimum building line and special minimum lot size programs, which were expanded citywide, and are currently seeing a record number of applications. Our staff is doing a great job with that respect. With the building setback line protection, we've expanded applications going forward. This is not a retroactive requirement. When you submit for a special minimum building line designation, you will have the same protection as a special minimum lot size, which is 40 years, instead of the current 20 years. In addition, a number of residents have come down to voice their concern before the Planning Commission, as well as City Council, that the protections should be in place when the application is accepted by the department. Often what happens is the neighborhood will submit an application, and it has all the right ingredients, but it does take some time for the Planning Department to work with the legal department and verify Harris County Appraisal District records to make sure that they are officially a complete application. So much like submitting a subdivision plat application, if you've got the right ingredients, you'll be able to be counted as to where you fall in terms of who came in first. We created a process to rescind designation of a special minimum building line. There is currently a process for minimum lot size, but there was no process for special minimum building line. And what it does is if you have property owners that represent 67% of the area that do not want to have this designation anymore, you can go through a Planning Commission process that's similar to the process that you create an application, so it's a public process.
Public hearing and all of that.
Yes. So it gives a mechanism to remove a designation if a neighborhood has transitioned or changed dramatically. Yes, Commissioner?
You're going fast. I didn't want to interrupt you.
Oops, sorry.
But, no, the second bullet, on the protected application?
Yes.
I wholeheartedly agree with that, for the benefit of the residents. My concern is, what about people that come in and are buying property? And all of a sudden, it's protected, but they have no way to know that.
Well, and that came up many, many times, and Brian and Patrick both are working diligently to have the notice provisions go out as soon as possible.
Okay.
The, matter of fact, that was the only issue we had with the development community.
Right.
They were not protesting this at all, except they wanted the notice provision, so they weren't-
Yeah, that would be my only concern too, Jim, otherwise I think it's, you know, great.
And the director has promised us.
Yes. We did meet with GHBA on Tuesday, and we have committed to work with them, as well as bringing the HAR to the table, to identify a way that when we get these applications, can we send out a newsletter and make it more prominent on our website.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
In addition, we have a number of applications, since this program's been in place for almost 20 years now, that are heading to their time to renewal. So what we did is we took a lot of the administrative and paperwork out of it, and simplified the renewal process as much as we could legally, and made it easier for residents to continue a protection if they have one already in place. Minimum lot size, you'll see a lot of the same characteristics, but one of the first things that we did that was a concern identified by the Super Neighborhood Alliance is that the commission's consideration of what can be determined, or what needs to be in place in order to determine if an area qualifies for a minimum lot size area, wasn't always conveyed to the neighborhood at the beginning of the process. So what the department is going to do is they're going to take it one step further from what we've talked about in our December meeting, when we identified corrections or modifications to the special minimum lot size and building line program. We're going to meet with the neighborhood, we're going to walk them through the entire process, we're going to tell them exactly what the commission's going to be looking for. In addition, at that time, we're going to make recommendations for areas or blocks that might not meet what we think the commission would support. Just as we would with any other application for a variance request, we walk the applicants through what we think commission, what we think staff could support, and ultimately the commission would approve. So we're going to do that at the front end, to remove any unexpected surprises for the neighborhood. Again, the protections will be in place when the application is accepted, so they have all the ingredients for the application. And we have revised the process to rescind the designation. So again, you've got 67% of the residents of the area that wants to remove the designation, the entire designation would be removed. But if you're between 67% and 55%, the Planning Department can make recommendations to the Planning Commission to modify the boundary. So if there are areas that still have a large level of support, they don't have to go back through the process again. We've created, again, a simplified renewal process with both the block-
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to that last statement that you made?
Sure.
As far as the modification, if it's between 55% and 67%, in which way, is it 55% of the total area?
Yes. It's 55% of the total area.
And are you modifying it to get it down to the 67?
We're modifying it, we would be removing areas, so that all that's left is 55% or more of people that want to have the designation still. So it's kind of slightly confusing if you read the ordinance, but 67%, between 55% and 67% of the people of the area does not want the application, so then we'd start removing blocks until all we have left is an area that has 55% in support of the designation.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's kind of, it's kind of, you need to tell us that you don't want it, but if you're, if there's that kind of gray area, if you will, we can modify the boundary, so that all that's left is the people that still want it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So again, we created the simplified renewal process, so that instead of going through the community meetings and having the vote, as long as more than, no more than 10% of the area protest, then they can just be administratively approved through the department. So again, this significantly makes it easier for neighborhoods wanting to maintain their protection. Another thing we did with government and utility-owned land, we removed it from the calculation of these areas. Often what happens is this type of property skews the lot size. If you think of parks, they're often larger, utility-owned land is often smaller. We removed them from the calculation. Same thing with government and utility land, we made that land neutral. Under the current ordinance, the government entity or the utility would have to submit a yes vote in order to count. So they'll still be part of the area, but what we're looking at is the residents, as to whether or not they support it or not. If at any time, let's say, a utility or a Parks Department wants to protest it, they can still protest it, and then they would be counted as part of the no vote and included in the area. We had some miscellaneous changes, and one of the miscellaneous changes, if you recall, in 2013, we created an amendment to Chapter 10. If you are building within three feet of a side property line, and your adjacent property is single-family residential, you had to get a construction and maintenance easement on your neighbor's property. There is no variance process, there is no mechanism. So for instance, if you have construction that was completed, and you find at the end of the process that you're two inches over, for instance, there's no variance mechanism. You could, we've heard in a couple cases, that the adjacent property doesn't mine that two-inch encroachment into the three feet, but they're not going to give construction or maintenance access easement to their property. Same thing if you're looking at historic homes, for instance, and you're building a second floor, and you want to maintain that side wall, there should be that process to at least have a variance process considered by the Planning Commission. And the variance process that will be in place will be identical to the Chapter 42 process. You'll have to identify what your hardship is, and go through those steps that you consider on a bi-weekly basis. Another thing that we did is if you have constructed something without the proper approval, much like the changes to the parking ordinance, as well as the permitting system, we will charge you double fees as you go through the process. Often what we found is that staff has to spend a large amount of time and resources going out there to bring these properties into compliance, so that does cost taxpayer money. So if you are not getting approval before you construct, then it will cost you, and that is something that we've heard on a number of occasions at the Planning Commission. Public Works has that authority, the Planning Department currently does not. And throughout the entire ordinance, we did a lot of cleanup language to make it simpler to understand, as well as adding words that might have been missing. But the Planning Commission, to kind of recap on the timeline, you're just hearing public comments today, the public comment period will remain open until the 1st of May, and then we'll bring back the ordinance changes with any modifications that we've heard based on public comment at the May 14th meeting. These ordinances, for the pleasure of the people that might be listening on TV or in the audience, they are available online at the Planning Department's website, houstonplanning.com. Under Announcements, you can see the summary of the changes, as well as the ordinance redline itself. In addition, on the city's main page, houstontx.gov, you can click on Ordinance Feedback and see a copy of the language. In addition to that, you can submit electronic comments that go directly to me.
Oh, great.
If you do not use this website, again, before May 1st, you can mail them to me directly at PO Box 1562, Houston, Texas 77251, or email brian.crimmins@houstontx.gov, and we will have those comments summarized for you on the May 14th meeting. With that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as open the public hearing.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, any questions of staff?
Brian, I have another question.
Absolutely.
On the special minimum lot size, I see that the language has been modified, where it's supposed to be 55% of the area, not of the number of lots?
Correct. And I apologize for not mentioning that. This is so that if you have two lots, you will be having to have two votes. So there was some question as to what was a lot. This is just going to make it so that if you own more land, or more area of the building, it will be, your vote will be weighted appropriately.
It's going to be weighted based on the number of acres you own?
Yes. So those large tracts will have more than the individual townhomes, and we felt that that was the most fair way to count the votes.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Jard?
I don't have a question, I have just a comment. When we started this, there were two things about predictability. One, we looked at where people were coming in continuously and asking for variances, and we were always granting them. So we thought, if that's true, let's go to the neighborhood, and go to the development community, and see if this is something they agreed on. So that was a big, big issue. Then there's also, quite frankly, where the neighborhood and the development community saw things that we didn't see, but were always troublesome to them. And I would say the neighborhoods, we've seen them, if we've been on the tour, unfortunately, a lot of those are enforcement issues. But if we don't even start off with a clear guidance about what should be there, then the enforcement issue is even harder to pin down. So we had great help from staff, we had tremendous help from CenterPoint and all the alphabet groups, and then the neighborhood people. And y'all know, sometimes I'm not the most patient person, but we spent a lot of time on these issues, and heard from everyone that wanted to say anything, sometimes over and over. But, and also, as always happens when this work is done, there are concessions on both sides. And so it may be easy, depending on which side you're on, to say, well, why don't you do this, or why don't you do this? Well, normally what happens is there is give and take on both sides, and when we left, Brian, I guess we'll say that we had consensus from all the people who participated, that this was as good as we could do at the time. So once again, staff worked very, very hard on this, and we had a lot of folks from, especially CenterPoint, who came in time and time again, Public Works, everybody, Solid Waste, came in, and these were difficult issues. And the reason there were problems is because these weren't the easy issues. These, you know, how many trashcans can you put out? Where can they be? Those are all mundane things, but they're terribly important, both the neighborhood and the development community. So once again, I'd like to thank Director Walsh and the staff for a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Zachariah?
You had mentioned the side building line to be three feet if the adjacent property was residential?
A single-family residential.
Single-family residential.
Correct.
So is that with gaining the approval, or I guess gaining a maintenance easement from the neighbor?
Yes.
And so if they don't grant it, then it's five feet?
Well, it is a three-foot setback, it will be three feet.
Oh, so anything less than three?
Anything less than three feet requires that easement on the adjacent property.
Okay, perfect. And it'll never come to us either way?
Unless there's a variance request.
Unless there's a variance request. Because right now, it's all done administratively, but there is no variance process. Going forward, if there is a need for a variance, the Planning Commission would consider it, just as you would any other Chapter 42 variance.
So then, the Planning Commission, without the need from the neighbor granting a maintenance easement, could then still give, say, a zero-foot building line or one-foot building line on the side?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Levensky, and then Ms. Clark.
Commissioner Clark asked a question before about someone-
Commissioner, I think you have your mic.
You have your microphone, please.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark raised-
Thank you. Commissioner Clark had raised a question about individuals perhaps purchasing homes in a neighborhood where an application had been placed for a minimum lot size requirement, and the ability to be aware of that. Is there any way that we could work with HCAD in, for lack of a better word, redlining those properties, so that if anybody went to the Harris County Appraisal District to look at that lot or developed property, that it would specifically say that it is under consideration for minimum lot size?
We can certainly reach out to HCAD and see if that is an opportunity. We're not opposed to looking at any reasonable option that doesn't put additional burden on staff or the applicant.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
I just had a quick comment. Jim, I know a committee like this is pretty hard to chair, and so I appreciate everything you've done, and the director, and the staff, and the numerous stakeholders. I think you guys wrapped your arms around a lot of issues that we've had trouble with clarification for a while, and I just wanted to say things.
Okay.
Commissioner, before we get to the public comment, I did want to note that Councilmember Robinson was involved in this process prior to him becoming Councilmember Robinson, and he continued throughout the process, and he- And his staff did let me know that unfortunately, he was not able to speak to you today, but he does offer support and appreciation for his input.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have one individual signed to speak, Mary Lou Henry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Mary Lou Henry. I'm in supportive of most of these changes, and I would like to request that you consider one additional thing, and that is in the special minimum lot size regulations, I think the commission should have discretion to modify the boundaries. It's nice to hear that the staff is going to work with applicants to try and get a boundary that the commission, they think the commission will approve, but I think the commission should have the last word. And I believe that you have seen several that probably would have been much better for the city as a whole if the boundaries had been modified. So I would request that you look at that. Thank you.
Ms. Henry, would you mind, I mean, we've got it on public record, but since we do have a comment period until May 1st, that you also submit that request in writing, just so we have it and staff?
Yes, I will.
And if you have particular suggestions as to how that might be addressed?
Yeah, I second that. If you could show us where you think it's of benefit to the city particularly, we'd like to see that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Brave?
Don't we have that option now, currently? Yes, I think we do have that option. That's in place.
You might not want to go anywhere, because you might have a comment to what I'm saying. The commission currently can modify the boundaries if they feel that it does not meet the criteria that's in the ordinance right now. But when you modify the boundaries, excuse me, you must remove entire block faces. So I think that there was some concern, and Ms. Henry and I did speak before the meeting regarding properties, commercial properties perhaps at the end of a block. So I do believe that we will look into that particular issue in greater detail over this month-long period.
Maybe you can phrase it like that. She's very familiar with my email address.
I'm sure she'll get it to be.
He's very familiar with mine.
I know.
Thank you. I have no one else signed to speak today. If there is no one, then the public hearing is closed. We will not take any further action today.
That's correct.
The public comment period remains open until May 1st, and as the schedule was presented earlier on there, it will go before the Quality of Life Committee for City Council also here shortly.
Yes.
And so we still have a ways to go, but I do want to thank Commissioner Jard for his tireless efforts, as well as Commissioner Nelson and Commissioner Brave, who've all worked on this, and the numerous other departments and public input and neighborhoods on that. So it's, I think, is the best way for a process to work like this, particularly when we discover that we have gaps here and there that...